Okay, I'd like to open the June 13th Regular Planning Board meeting. Calling it to order at 6 o'clock under Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20F. This meeting is being video recorded and livestreamed. First up are administrative items. First is a preliminary subdivision plan, Rural Road File Number 23-013V-RRL. This is a request by the applicant to consider a preliminary subdivision plan entitled Preliminary Plan Rural Road, prepared for Emmanuel P. Pacico, and located on the west side of Gifford Road, south of 225 Gifford Road, assessors map 29, Lot 22C, proposing to divide the property into two lots.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emmanuel Pacico. I'm here with Emmanuel Pacico Senior, 26, Andrea, Co-op Westport. He's the owner of Lot 22C, Gifford Road. We're here tonight seeking approval for preliminary subdivision plan for a rural road. So what we have here is an existing lot of 151,000 square feet. We're seeking to divide that into two separate lots. If they're separated, one will have about 71,000 square feet, the other will have about 74,000 square feet. So utilizing the rural road design here, each lot will have enough frontage and upland area as well. Can we zoom in to that? We had previously come for a pre-application meeting in which I showed you three different designs. This was the one you guys seemed to be more in favor of. So the additions to this one now are that we've added a drainage area here where storm water would flow across the rural road into this little area here, then through the swale, and then to a detention basin there. And I've mentioned in the past, there's also an existing soil absorption system on site. So that's why we kind of did the roadway this way. We're going to be requesting a wafer for radius, roadway radius over here from the 25 to at least six feet. We're also going to ask for a wafer for to block five existing typical detail for a rural road instead of having to crown the road. We're looking to cross slope on the road. This way it can direct the water to this area here, flow to our detention basin. Future soil absorption system should be located roughly in this area. We do have test pits for this lot. We haven't done these as of yet. Our neighbor also has test pits, so I assume it's going to be pretty consistent with both lots once we do these. After this meeting, we'll schedule that. But that's pretty much what we have so far. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Players, could you comment?
I don't really have much to comment on this. It was pretty much given the okay for the conceptual subdivision plan number two that was before us in February. So if those are the anticipated waivers that you mentioned that are on the plan, when you get, if you go to a definitive plan, then that will be reviewed by the consultant and will be addressed if there's any issues. But for preliminary, nothing stands out to me that is a red flag.
I don't have any concerns with that as well.
So do we have frontage and do we have area?
Yes, the frontage for parcel B will be 150.27 feet. Frontage for parcel A will be 196.95, I believe, or 96.
Okay, and both have over 60,000 square feet?
Correct, over 70,000.
And both of them have more than 50% of uplift?
Correct.
Comments on the board?
I just had one comment. I don't have any problem with the geometry here with me. I just had a question of why is the road in two feet of fill? And the road is essentially flat.
The road is in two feet of fill?
Yeah, if you look at your profile, the road is, the road ends without any off grading. It's just two feet of fill and...
Oh, because we have another proposed contract to blend it into the site. That's just the existing versus the proposed. And then we will, once we move to the next phase, we'll drop all the grading out for the next phase.
All right, but you could, instead of having a 1% road, you could have a 2% road and not put two feet. I don't, I don't know why you want to fill the road and direct the, this, I understand now the drainage swale and I'm not opposed to the cross slope of the draining, but it drains, it directs the water from the road towards your existing leaching field.
Yes, we're going to have, well, we're going to have a cross, across the road to take it to the left side of the property, in between the properties. So it won't be pitching toward, it'll slightly pitch towards the house, but there'll be a cross slope on the top.
I guess...
So the stormwater will flow from, anything that hits here will flow across the driveway into this area. And then once there's a house here, it will pitch this way, everything will be diverted to the, to the used area. So instead of doing the crown of the road, we're not pitching anything towards this system. It's going to, this is going to be a little bit elevated.
I understood that, and you could still do that cross slope and save yourself a couple of feet of fill. It's...
I mean, the road is already going to be about 15 inches of ground road, so a few more inches underneath it, I don't think it's going to make a substantial difference.
I guess, I don't have any problem with the design layout. I just need to, I guess we just need to see the swale and how it intercepts the water that comes off the road.
Of course.
Could you show us where you propose to site the houses?
Yeah.
On Parcell A and B.
The house will be roughly in this location for parcel A, and over here on parcel B will have the respective 25-foot setback. It'll be roughly centered in the lot, probably a little bit to the left so they can, so you can drive into the, into a garage, but it will be about 25, 26 feet off the roadway.
So for, so for parcel A, then, the house there, does the driveway that comes in and the rural road, yeah, bends there, does the bend, but driveway bend around absorption system?
Yeah, that will go around that system.
I see.
Anybody else? Okay. Anything more from the planners? Okay.
If you're ready for a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to approve the preliminary subdivision plan entitled Preliminary Plan Zero Rural Road Emmanuel P. Pacico because it conforms to the planning board's requirements.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is a pre-application consultation, File Number 23-018PAC. Request by David Santos of Par Corporation, installation of a 15 by 30-foot commercial garage at 146 State Roads, Map 3, Lot 40 and 40A.
Good evening. My name is David Santos with Par Corporation. I joined with today the applicant and owner, Junior Burke.
Of course.
Here we are proposing to construct a 15 by 30 commercial garage on an existing 60,000 square foot residential lot at 146 State Road. To briefly go over the conceptual layout with you, I know this is just a pre-application meeting, so we're really here to, to receive your feedback. Briefly go over our layout here. We're proposing this 15 by 30-foot garage. We have a 24-foot drive aisle to a parking area in the front here. Around the back of the building will be a gravel laydown area. And behind the lot, we will have our stormwater mitigation area where we will have some sort of bio retention or infiltration to meet the water quality and stormwater requirements that Westport requires. We are, we're looking at upgrading the septic system here as well. We are going to be increasing the flow. This is going to be a motorcycle restoration facility, so only two employees, and more or less along the lines of a garage or a warehouse. So this is the layout here. I am willing to answer any questions that you might have. We're really looking to receive your feedback before we go on to the next steps here.
Okay, you mentioned you're going to upgrade the septic system. Is it going to go somewhere? I can't really read it on here, but...
Yes, we're, we're going to be working with the Board of Health to see exactly what they will require here. The additional flow is very minimal, two, two employees. It's only, it's a very small flow that's going to be added to the system, which we'll need to upgrade regardless. So we're proposing that the, the building here is serviced by a septic tank that will run by gravity into the existing septic system that's there.
Okay, and so the, both dwellings go to the same septic system?
Correct, yes.
Any questions from the board? Concerns?
What is the red square in the gravel area?
Oh, the red square in the gravel area here is proposed area for roof runoff infiltration to minimize the stormwater mitigation area that we'll have in the rear here. So all the clean roof runoff will be infiltrated back into the ground naturally with essentially a dry well system.
And you know the new curb cut on Route 6 needs a new state permit?
Correct. So this site actually has an existing 30-foot, so we are utilizing the existing curb cut there.
I could be wrong, but I think you still need to get, get approval from the state.
Absolutely, okay. We're definitely looking for that.
And they may not like it because it's too close to the other access or other neighboring accesses, but I'm not sure that that would stop you from doing something with just one driveway.
What was the thinking behind the location of the garage setback as the, I'm just curious? As opposed to bringing it up closer to the road and putting the parking behind or something?
Yeah, yeah. The, the existing lot here, you can kind of see it from the topography. There's a couple of large trees in the front here, and we're really just trying to keep the building off the street. The site slopes downwards to the north here, away from the street. So just to minimize the street residents, you know, kind of have a smaller commercial garage that's set off the street, we felt would be more appealing.
So are you going to have signs on the advert, for the public to come in to take whatever their motorcycle service?
There'll likely be a, a small sign on the building, but not on the street. That's part of it is going to set back to keep a lower profile. Can't really get work done with people in and out all day.
But do you, do you own the, the house? Do you live in the house?
Yes, I'm under contract with the owner.
Oh, okay.
And I currently live in the dwelling on the property now.
I see.
The only commentary I had is that you have two curb cuts and you'll probably need to check with Mass DOT if the second one is permitted for use, and that you'll have to go before the Board of Health for your septic to have it upgraded. Other than that, I don't, I don't see any major issues with this layout for a pre-application.
Are you going to hold the structures are on the...
They were all, they're 1929.
So I think the first house was put in 1929, but I think the second structure was 1963.
Oh, really? Now is that the second dwelling in the, in the back?
Yes. There's no heat in that, correct?
Uh, no.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just address the curb cut issue. So what Mass DOT wants you to do, because of the activity, you need, you need to apply for the permit because of the work that you're going to perform. So what they want you to do is design your curb cut to their standards. We approve it, and then they, so as soon as we approve it, you can't apply for your curb cut permit until we approve it. But prior to getting a building permit, you have to apply for a curb cut permit. You can proceed with the work, and it's at your own peril. So in other words, if we, if we approve something that Mass Highway doesn't agree with, they can make you change it. And, and they, they're really good about it, and they'll work with you, especially in a small project like this. But it's just, you're required to do that, even though you have a curb cut. They should probably change the wording on that permit.
I do notice it's the gas station right next door, so they have a large curb cut, I believe.
Yeah, even, even them, if they were to redo their parking lot, they need to reapply again.
We have plenty of commercial properties in which the entire frontage is a curb cut. And we've seen, you've seen...
Don't change it, yeah.
We've seen, you know, Mastard make them shrink it and put in irons and all that stuff. It all, it all makes sense.
In the long run, it'll just take your time just to go that route, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, but I, I think both the uses are allowed in this district.
Is the dwelling in the back, the one bedroom, is that tied to this septic system also?
It is.
I saw it has a bathroom.
Yeah, it is tied to the septic system.
So you have two dwellings, two, or is there one considered accessory to the main?
They are, they are two dwellings. Right now, the use of those dwellings is multifamily, residential use.
The only thing I don't know about, and it's really not up to us, but is if that second dwelling unit is an accessory apartment detached. And I don't know what happens, I know you've had it there for, not you, but it's been there for 60 years. I assume that it's grandfathered, because otherwise you'd have to get a special permit to have an accessory detached apartment. But that's just for your information. We don't...
Thank you.
If you, you could ask the zoning board of appeals or the building inspector, who was the zoning enforcement officer. But considering it's been there, I don't think it's going to be a problem. And I think that you can use both uses on this lot. We went over that today. I think in the past, I think it was if you, whether or not you could have two different uses on the same property. But when we redid the zoning bylaw a few years ago, it now says one or more of the uses in the table. And so you've got residential and commercial, and this is, I guess, would be considered auto repair. So I think you're, you're okay. So beyond that, I mean, this is a preliminary application. I don't think any of us have any problems with what you're doing.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
But you still have to work with these two to get the application in with the, with the stormwater retention and all that stuff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys.
Next up is approval not required A and R. AP 45 Lots, I'm sorry, Map 45 Lots 8 and 15. File Number 23-015A, request by the applicant for endorsement of a plan of land showing two lots for land located at Zero Division Road, Map 45, Lot 8 and 15.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to use the smaller representing the applicant, New Peak Energy. The, we're seeking endorsement of the board, seeking endorsement of the board of this plan tonight. The plan simply creates a new line of division in the tract, which you can see right here. But it explicitly disclaims any intent to create a buildable lot, which you can see right here on Lot 1. Parenthesis says that it, the lot's unbuildable due to lack of... So approval is justified because the plan does not create two or more buildable lots as lot is defined within the subdivision control law. So as you know, subdivision is two or more buildable lots typically, so. Want to answer any questions that you have?
I had a conversation this afternoon, or this morning, with Ross Moran from Land Trust, and, um, not about this, but I assume that this is going to be put into conservation?
Yeah, that, so that, that land will be conveyed to the land, to Westport Land Trust in a few months.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled Plan of Land 408 Sodom Road, Westport, Mass, Shirley Sylvia, dated December 12.
I think it may be written wrong.
Yeah, that was from a prior meeting, Shirley Sylvia.
Yeah, so I would go back to, this is on Division Road.
I'm sorry. I still move to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is approval not required A and R for Gifford Road and Mouse Mill Road. File Number 23-016A, request by the applicant for endorsement of a plan of land showing two lots for land located at Zero Gifford Road, Map 31, Lot 11.
Good evening, members of the board. Red Diggle, South Coast Engineering, for Michael Denny Ferry at Propley on Gifford Road, Mouse Mill Road. We're proposing here as a division of this parcel into two lots, Lot 2 and Lot 1. And primary objective is to create Lot 2, which has been accepted for the agricultural preservation restriction by the Mass Department of Agriculture pending approval by the board. So Lot 2, as you see, is 32.2 acres, and the area at the corner of Mouse Mill and Gifford Road is going to be exempted from that, and that's 3.36 acres. And that's about what we have over here. There was a note on the plan, though, retaining two Lot 1 regarding the zoning. It does have frontage and area, but no determination has been made for wetlands to see if it would be eligible for building. So if anything were to be done with that, it would be on a buyer to determine whether it should be applied upon that lot or on that lot.
Okay, so both lots are in Chapter 61A. The total parcel is, and for the foreseeable future, they're going to continue in 61A. And so this is not going to change hands at the moment. It's just going to transfer from a regular lot with 61A to a APR property with 61A. Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions?
I have a question. I've asked other people in town, but nobody's given me an answer. Where did the name Mouse Mill Road come from and why?
I wrote this somewhere, and as other people in town will be able to comment on it, but there were some very small mills along this road at one time, and there's remained one here, up across the street, a small mill. I don't have some more, I hope there's two buildings in the month, but it makes sense.
It's an old layout, right, going back to the...
1798?
Seventy, yeah.
And I think this is discontinued because of AD8, several different sections, so...
Yeah, well, it was actually a new layout right at AD8, and it was a cold section in 1961, right in the very end. The original layout, actually, followed an unclued office.
So if there are no questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the, the plan is straightforward, you know, division, and I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled Plan of Land at Gifford Road and Mouse Mill Road, Westport, Mass, for Michael P. Ferry, dated December 15, 2022, assessors Map 31, Lot 11, because the plan complies with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81P.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is approval not required A and R for Plan of Land in Westport, Massachusetts, for Caracorp Industries. File Number 23-017A, request by the applicant for endorsement of a plan of land reconfiguring four lots for land located at Zero Granite Post Road, Map 69, Lot 116.
Good evening, everyone. As chairman for the record, my name is Mark Boucher, Boucher and Associates. And this evening I'm here on behalf of our client, Caracorp Industries. The plan that we are presenting this evening is a reconfiguration of one of the buildable lots in the previously approved subdivision for the Granite Post Extension. And they're reconfiguring the lot to incorporate a couple of pieces of some parcels that they own to the south. Basically, the reason for the reconfiguration, you're familiar with the solar farm to the south of here, that piece has, I believe it's a 30-year lease on it. And what the applicant is interested in doing is, I guess at some point, that possibility that that lease expires 30 something years from now, they wanted to maintain a potential access to the land that will revert back to their ownership at some time. So they're marketing the lots, they're currently marketing the lots that front on Granite Post Loop there. And the plan that we have before you this evening... um, Granite Post Loop there, and the plan that we have before you this evening, um, just reconfigures the lot to maintain, we've given a lot number, which we always do to avoid confusion in conveying, uh, previously numbered lots, um, and the lot has the, uh, frontage area and upland area to conform current zoning requirements, um, the remaining parcels are all labeled as non-buildable lots, either by virtue of not having a sufficient frontage or area or accommodation of the two, um, and we're asking this evening that you endorse the plan as approval not required.
So, I, I am, I think, in need of more explanation of where the new lot lines are and where the old ones are.
The new lot, uh, which I believe we call lot twenty-one, comes down here, and to pick up area, we extended it to the south, and then it comes back in here, so essentially the building envelope, um, of this lot is here, these parcels were existing parcels, so we have changed the, um, configurate, well, changed configuration, but we haven't changed any lot lines that were not involved in the reconfiguration or the creation of this new lot, um, from the previous A and R plan, that, uh, these parcels were left over when the, um, the last A and R plan that we were in here, they created the, the large piece that was picked up by, um, Budgets Bay Coalition, those configurations of the exterior parcel lines have to change.
I'm a little lost. I don't, I don't see, I don't see which lot, it's Mark, I'm sorry.
We've got, we've got one, we're not increasing the number of buildable lots, we're only changing the shape of this lot here, so this lot comes down here, it has a hundred and fifty-eight feet of frontage, not including the tangent here, on Granite Post Road, and then the lot line for the lot that's going to be conveyed comes down here in order to pick up sufficient area to...
Where, what was it before, where were the lot lines?
What was, what was the shape of the lot previously that was the buildable lot?
I don't think, I didn't bring a copy of the previous subdivision plan with me.
That one?
There you go.
It's turned on its side, your other manager's...
So this, this was the previous lot, so what we've done basically is, we've kind of pieced out of here and brought it down up into here to pick up area.
So, uh, the piece, the, the, the new parcel I was part of that lot?
Uh, it was a portion of it, that was, yes.
And then you've added lot eleven, which is new parcel H, to this, to that outline we just saw in blue?
Um, that's the assessor's designation, so it essentially, for, for each of the parcels, they, they have assessor's, uh, lots that don't coincide with the subdivision necessarily. What we've done, similar to, when typically we'll give lots numbers, we'll give parcels letters, um, it helps to differentiate which are buildable and which are not on the plans, and similar to the, the method that we don't repeat a lot number in a subdivision, as lots change and we reconfigure them, we've done the same thing with parcels, so there were certain parcels in the, uh, the previous subdivision configuration, um, that were changed, so we've now given them new letter designations, so that if those parcels ever wanted, if, if the carriers ever wanted to convey any of those parcels as they're shown in this plan, to either combine them with, um, adjoining land or for whatever reason, there's a distinct, unique parcel letter that they could do that.
No, I, I get that, I'm just trying to figure out where, what, what is now, you label as lot eleven, new parcel H, that was, that, was that...
The old, the old line of, of what is now parcel H came, I don't even know if this...
It doesn't show.
Shows that, this might even be older than that, so if you could bring our plan back in?
Yeah.
This line right here, goes an old lot line, or old parcel line, I should say, between what these two parcels were in the previous subdivision.
Okay, so those two existed, they, with the exception of that reconfiguration of that line, right, that you just mentioned, those two big parcels on, on the south?
Yeah, and, and, I mean, the reason, I think, that they're being sort of designated as distinct parcels, the assessors have been designated, uh, with those platinum lot labels that we have reflected on the plan.
Mark, is, is I intended to be the future way into this backland?
A portion of it. We, we did sort of a conceptual layout before the entire, um, solar farm was designed and approved, and that basically is in the location that a potential future connection road out to Main Road could be, if it was presented to the planning board at some time after the lease expires, and again, I believe it's a thirty-year lease, um, the, the carriers just wanted to maintain ownership, this, this is an existing buildable lot that's about to be sold, this one here, what they wanted to do was to reconfigure it in order to maintain the ability to convey that lot without having to go back to, um, you know, once it's been sold, your, at the mercy of your owners, they would agree to have the, uh, the lot reconfigured at that point, so this plan would allow them to convey what used to be lot one sixteen, the previous subdivision, that was lot one twenty-one, and they maintain that strip of land between those two lots that front on Granite Post Road, they'll maintain ownership of that.
So the only way this could work as a subdivision is to connect new parcel I through some land to get to Main Road?
Absolutely.
Because you couldn't have another dead end, another dead end?
No, it would have to be a connection, and, um, I mean, they would have, you're familiar with property, they have a lot of obstacles that would have to be addressed and, and overcome, if you're conservation issues, they have, uh, natural heritage that would all have to be addressed after, I'm...
And this is thirty years from now?
It's at least, the lease for the, the solar, I believe, is at least thirty years.
Probably not going to be on the planning board in thirty years.
I'm probably not going to be presenting a plan, I certainly hope not.
Yeah, some guy's going to say, how the hell did they ever come up with that?
Yeah, I, I, Mark, I feel the same way, I just, uh, you know, at some point, what the, what the hell were these people thinking to create a lot like that, you know, I mean, it, it, you know, it's a, it's a creative piece of geometry, and I, I think it's compliant, but it's odd.
It was configured, um, basically to maintain buildability and to meet the requirements.
Yeah, I got the magic hundred fifty and sixty thousand and just sixty, sixty thousand and thirty-one square feet.
And so this lot eleven, uh, does that have frontage anywhere?
It does not.
So new parcel H?
Yes, it's about around twenty-one.
Well, any more comments, Chairman?
I recommend endorsing the plan.
Okay, so, how, how wide is this little triangle on lot one twenty-one between lot twelve and lot ten?
Um, I believe it's around ten feet, ten or twelve feet, but between, obviously between the frontage and the building envelope of a lot, it needs to move on, wants to fall away.
So when you're trying to figure this out, you couldn't figure another way to do it without that little ten-feet sliver?
Again, it takes into consideration the concept that was done for the remaining land, and that's what it's based on.
Well, I mean, does lot, uh, one, or I, what is that, I?
Parcel I.
Parcel I, sorry, yeah. Does that have to flare out like that, is that to create a turnaround, or a potential turnaround?
It was actually designed, no, it, it, it's designed as a through, I say designed, I mean, it was conceptualized as a through connection, you see the Latin line over in here, it's, at some point in the future, if they did design a road through here, it was to try to keep the road as far from the Latin line as possible, there, there would even be wet crossing at some point in the future, that would be required, I believe, even to accommodate the concept, so it's, it's certainly not, um, it would not be as straightforward to, to design a road through here.
Well, I would entertain a motion, um, but it's not as if we're approving this, we're just endorsing this, and I would say that, I would hope that you wouldn't think that this is your best effort that you've ever done, so. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, it is odd as it is, and I think it is compliant with, um, regulations, so, um, I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled Approval Not Required, Plan of Land, Westport, Mass, for Carrick Corp. Industries Limited, trustee of one ninety CW Trust, dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, assesses map sixty-nine, lot one sixteen, because the plan complies with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, eighty-one P.
Second.
Any more comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reappointments?
I would just not do the harbor water study since there's no, it's not a committee.
So, um, we could do it all at once, Sean Buller for Ag Open Space Preservation Trust, Bob Daler for Cable Advisory, Climate Resilience Committee, Infrastructure Safety Oversight Subcommittee, Mark Schmidt, Community Preservation Committee, Long-Term Planning, Building Evaluation, and Manisaurus Economic Development Task Force Tax Incentive Program Committee, and Infrastructure Oversight Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Cuba Serv as a member of the, the Climate Resilience Committee, and you're also the serpent rep?
Yes. So if, if I become part of the, well, I am on the file, but I need to be reappointed to that. Okay.
What was the second one you said, Bob?
Serpent.
Serpent, oh.
We did serpent last, last meeting.
We did serpent last time. At least I hope so, because they, they made me vice chair, so, I can't be vice chair unless I'm a commander.
Yeah, we turned that one, that was voted off.
Okay, so I entertain a motion.
These are accepted by unanimous consent?
Yes. Okay, six fifteen, public hearing for Stone Ridge, a private community, file number twenty-three dash oh oh two, SP dash ILF dash SPA dash LID, this is continued from March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, uh, I believe that we've received a, a letter of notice from their attorney, uh, Levin and Levin, um, that they would like to withdraw this application. So, uh, I think I would entertain a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Six thirty, public hearing, uh, for Inheritance Lane, file number twenty-three dash oh one oh C dash RRL, this is a request by the applicant to consider a definitive subdivision plan entitled Inheritance Lane, located between ninety-nine and one fifteen Old Pine Hill Road, proposing to divide the property into four lots, assessors map forty-three, lot three.
Good evening, Sean Lee from John Collins, both these engineers representing the Dean family who are here tonight, both of them are here tonight, uh, this is a parcel, uh, that straddles, you can go between Old Pine Hill and Pine Hill Road, it's been in the Dean family for several generations, uh, most of the members live out here in the existing three, four main lots, uh, what we're proposing to do, there is existing roadway here which has a lot of history to it, that just showed up on your Google Maps as a, it goes all the way through to a narrow little neck here, uh, it was originally used as an ancient way for the Continental Army to circumnavigate the Wilcox Allen Farm that was to the south, because they didn't want the Continental Army passing through their bridge, so it's deeded out that way, so this, this parcel, this has been used for years and years and years as a throughway, what they were proposing to do essentially is taking this existing parcel, which has frontage and upfrontage, has a buildable lot in itself, right now we have one lot, what we're proposing to do is create a roadway that creates two additional buildable house lots, and a remaining land which had used for staging area for several things, but keeping one lot out here and creating two lots here, with a gravel driveway that comes off, part of this driveway is paved up to this point, we're going to extend the gravel driveway with a hammerhead turnaround at the end, uh, with drainage, with simple drainage swale, retention ponds, uh, to create these two buildable lots, six and seven, you may ask why is it five, six, seven, and eight, these original lots were one, two, three, and this was four, so not to confuse for, for both attorneys and assessors, we call these five, six, seven, eight, uh, I know that we have comments from the consultant, and we have comments from all the boards slash departments in town that we've addressed, and Mr. Conover here is here to address any of those questions with the drainage and those things, so.
Okay, so let's go over the comments, uh, so that you can respond, so, the assessors, uh, recommend approval, uh, the Board of Health recommends approval, uh, the Board of Selectmen, no comments, uh, the Conservation Commission, if I can read the writing, applicant needs to have wetlands delineation approved, any grading work within a hundred feet of the bordering vegetated wetlands needs to be permitted with a notice of intent.
You can skip it out.
Continued.
It's the same.
Same one, okay, you did it twice, okay, Fire Department, approval with modifications, uh, the office has reviewed a four-lot subdivision site plan entitled Inheritance Lane, this office has reviewed a four-lot subdivision state plan entitled Inheritance Lane, uh, the roadway site plan shall comply with five twenty-seven CMR, chapter, five twenty-seven CMR, chapter eighteen point two, fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than twenty feet, fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed vertical clearance of not less than thirteen feet six inches, fire apparatus access roads shall have a cul-de-sac design of not less than a hundred and twenty feet sixty-foot radius, or a hammerhead design of not less than a hundred and twenty-five feet, a hundred and twenty feet in width, a width? I don't think so, um, the center of the cul-de-sac shall remain free from obstructions that prohibit emergency vehicles from complete turn, consideration of a gradual berm edge, under Fire Protection Regulation one hundred, subsurface water storage tanks shall be installed... water storage tanks shall be installed within 750 feet of a structure. A fire department permit is required before the installation. The water storage tanks shall be protected, filled, dressed with appropriate appliances, and serviced before occupancy. The fire department shall inspect the water storage tanks before occupancy. Street signs and house numbers shall be installed before the final occupancy of any structure." And that's approval with modifications. SW Cole, our consulting engineer, has the following comments. "Per section five, part one of the reference regulation, a subdivision of more than four lots, four lots or more where there is no public water available, the planning board and the chief of the fire department may require a subsurface water storage tank. Two, a cross-section of proposed spillway noting materials to be used shall be provided. Three, no operation and maintenance plan has been provided." With the submission, "It's noted that the top of the dike creating the diversion dikes in the detention ponds is only five feet wide. This is inadequately sized to move large equipment such as typically sized batcores from the lane to the outlet structure to perform emergency repairs if a situation arises. Four, drainage design work to, as designed, is dependent on overland flows. This is especially vital for the flows that would, that would outlet the culvert going under the driveway, proposed lot seven. And easement shall be provided to ensure unimpeded flows into the future. The easement shall also include the dykes, detention basins, outlet structures, and the means to access and maintain the structures. Five, plan notes the use of existing 16-foot driveway, cross-section unknown, in a 16-foot wide gravel travel surface. Reference one, Table A, standard specifications, note I requires a 20-foot wide travel surface for both paved and gravel lanes. Per reference one, section four, paragraph four B, dead-end streets over 150 feet long, Y-shaped designs for rural residential lanes, provided that each leg of such turnaround be not less than 50 feet in length. Proposed turnaround only has a leg of 32 feet long." And that's, end of the comments. So if you want to respond to some of those?
Yeah, John Connell, Northeast Engineers. The 16-foot way that kind of overlaps between both fire department and coal, we have an existing 16-foot paved surface for the first 300 feet there, and then we propose 600, roughly 650 feet of the 16-foot gravel to match that. The, we would have 16 feet of gravel and then two feet on each side for a shoulder. That's typically how I've seen it, not in other towns where for two houses, it's a lot of, 20 feet's a lot of gravel, a lot of, a lot of width there to maintain ultimately for, it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't really increase the functionality of that drive. We would have the 20-foot clear though, in case there were anything ever down there that, you know, that they would be able to pass their vehicles down there. The hammerhead, I think he's measuring the hammerhead from the end of the radius, from the edge of pavement down to the bottom there, I think it's like 42 feet, I think it is. And then from, from the end, I thought we had over 50. But, you know, I can, we can tweak that and determine where exactly he's measuring that from. But that, that really is not a big change at all. The ONM plan is standard, that's, that's not a problem. The berm with, he, Cole, SW Cole mentions that we only have a five-foot wide detention basin berm. The, I know where he's coming from, on larger projects, commercial projects, we typically provide a 10-foot wide, eight to 10-foot wide berm. Where someone needs that width to get off the roadway or a parking lot to navigate the entire basin to maintain it. In this case, it's a small residential development, and they'll have access basically at grade to drive right into that basin. It's, it's, it follows the natural grade of the land, it drains dry, and he'll also have access to get around to the, to the outlet, you know, between the property line and the slope. He can get around, maintain the outlet, the riprap, et cetera. So I would say in this case, it's a case-by-case thing, but in this case, the 10-foot berm really wouldn't serve much additional functionality, if anything, to this. The owners, who ultimately maintain this basin, has the maneuverability and the flexibility to maintain that basin even with the five-foot berm. So I guess that would be, that would be Cole's comments. And still, like, cross-section will provide that detail. That's also not a problem.
I hear you mention that this is completely wide open, this is a patch. This is not a wooden parcel in any way, shape, or form. So this 40-foot way is pretty much open, 40 feet. So the concern is usually on traveled ways for a fire department is, I can't get down, I'll take the mirrors off the side of the truck and vice versa when we can't pass. There's plenty of room on either side to navigate and to claim what we get down here.
And turnaround.
Yeah, I mean, they want 120-foot cul-de-sac. A cul-de-sac in a gravel road doesn't work, it also turns into a giant grass field because it never gets used. So having a hammerhead turnaround will be used more frequently both by the homeowners and will stay wide open and get a greater.
The fire department comment about the tanks, is that, I'm unaware of the tanks. Is that typical, that they require the, the?
We have, we have a regulation for four or more.
New lots.
New lots.
Right, so we're.
It requires a, a tank.
Correct, we're grading three lots here essentially. This lot already exists as if, basically, we're two buildable lots, but a remaining land lot at the end, essentially, which, you know, I don't think would ever be, ever be buildable just by conservation issue, but it is a separate lot down here with access. But essentially, this lot already exists, so we're creating one, two, three, so I don't think we fall into the requirement of the tank.
But your application says four.
Well, it is four lots, it is four lots, and the fact that when you put a road through and we're taking a sliver from this lot to recreate the 40-foot way, it's a four lot southern Cali, but we're only creating three lots. This existing lot is already a buildable lot as an assist, but we're taking, we're shaving off the section here to make a 40-foot way parallel to the wall, existing wall there. So it's creating, I don't want to say it's creating a new lot, but it's reconfiguring an existing lawn, I guess the best way to put it.
So is the, the first section of paved, it's really a driveway, goes to the house on the other side?
Goes to the house to the north, correct?
And that's not part of the subdivision, right?
Well, it's part of the subdivision road, yes.
So it's going to access four lots, right? The road?
It will be accessed to four lots, the, that's correct. But the regulation states four new lots, four more. So the question is, this lot already exists, this lot already exists, what are we creating? We're creating this by extending the road down there. This makes more sense because, I mean, these are nice historic stone walls out front here. To have curb cut, curb cut, curb cut going down the road, this is a more efficient way of doing it than to build, access that way.
You don't have to convince me. So the lot to the south of the road, that one, does it have a dwelling on it?
No, it's vacant right now.
And the access would be from the?
We would probably use the access rather than having the curb cut 25 feet from the lot.
And seeing as you're an expert on ancient ways, is, if this is an ancient way, and now it's been altered to be a paved driveway, is it still an ancient way?
It's still an ancient way, and in other words, the way was created, you know, and improving the surface doesn't change the status of the way. It just changed, and in fact, we came in with a, an outline and said, this is an ancient way. You would probably make this adequate with great construction requirement to go through there. In fact, I mean, the Deans will tell you the FedEx driver, if you put us on their GPS, they've tried to.
Go through?
Go through.
At least it tells another.
It does not have a.
Right into the woods, there's nothing. And off they go.
Yeah, it does, if you go down, you know, it'll tell you, take a right, you know, and but you couldn't get through here with, it's pretty wet in here, there's actually those small stream, intermittent stream into here. This is very obvious, and this continues down to the Westmore River on the other side.
Okay, planners, what do you say?
I mean, it's not four new lots.
Let me just know the fire tank.
Oh. I don't think it's a bad design at all. I think that 16 feet in width would be sufficient for this project instead of 20, if the board agreed.
I think we have the ability to waive the strength of the department, but what does everybody else think?
We do.
Mr. Chair, and I agree with the 16-foot width, and just make a note that they maintain the trees to the width that the fire department wants. I mean, the 16 foot's plenty for the truck to get down.
In the shoulders.
Yeah, yeah. I also agree on the fire tank, it's, you know, and I believe this is a family issue that we developed, that they're adding, one of their children's going to move to the back.
Right, exactly.
They're all building it together and.
And there is a retention pond down there, I don't know if that helps the cause, but.
Well, we have this kind of issue on a couple of ancient ways to get improved in town. At least you're coming forth and putting the improvements in, like, should be done. I have a time, we got people coming, they're going to keep on the gravel way, and then they go back and pave it.
Right, right.
Okay, so the recommendation of the planners?
Jim.
Excuse, I'm sorry.
Couple of questions here before you proceed. So could you, so drawing L2 has six waivers requested. Can you walk us through those waivers, what you're asking for, what they, and what is the requirement? Just explain that, please.
waiver from right-of-way clearing.
Is that, is that the full width?
Yeah, 42. In other words, they're requesting, I'm not sure whether it would be, if you request a part of it, they should clear the whole way. It's pretty much cleared the whole way now. So, I mean, there's grass on each side and everything, but we're asking for that way.
You mean the fire department's asking for it, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah. I mean, we, we, more than ever, this is going to be more than 20 feet clear at all times.
Okay.
The next one was waiver from the 1% leveling area.
We have an existing roadway that essentially, the last 60 feet of it already drains. We're not altering that in any way, we're taking where the crest is in the middle of this lot, and everything's going to the back. So rather than regrade everything, go back, we just want to leave it the way it is and let's disturb us.
So it's, so you're saying it drains down currently the end of the, or the beginning?
It's supposed to be level and less than 1% running off during existing roadway. There's already existing paved way there.
Yeah, full farm.
It would be kind of crazy to regrade that whole pavement just for the sake of doing. It is pretty level, it comes off a little bit, it's a little less, I think, 2%, but it's not 1%.
All right.
The dash line is the existing wave, it says.
Okay, what about standard cross-section?
Well, the standard cross-section calls for a crown on a gravel road. Everybody knows a gravel road doesn't work very well, it's better to pitch it to one side. What we're trying to do is make it so it pitches towards the swale and drains down to the detention pond. Standard cross-section would have a typical crown pitching in each direction. We want to get everything going this way to the detention pond, so.
Yeah, but you've got a drainage ditch on both sides of the road now.
Correct, most of this, just drainage ditch already exists, and it catches most of the water coming down off this hill going this way. We're adding obviously some gravel here, so we want to take extra gravel, drainage that we're taking into the swale and down to the.
And on the paved section, are there swales?
No, there's no, there's no, we're starting, we're actually starting.
At the high point.
Right at the high point of the, we're putting a swale on this side, on the south side of the road, which catches the water to come down and around. But we're not interfering with what's already existing. Basically, there's a ridge right here, you can see there's a ridge where the houses, the other three houses sit, like I said, it goes toward the point of the road. What we're doing is at that ridge, picking up all the water and heading it towards, to get the reduction for the stormwater that's required.
We're catching whatever we, whatever we can physically can on that ridge, and on swales on both sides. As Sean mentioned, this, this is a big hill here, we didn't want to interfere with that current drainage pad, and that's how that all goes now, and it flows in that westerly direction, hits up against what's there, and then goes to the level. So we wanted to leave that alone, but we also wanted to catch the entire roadway, hence the reverse crown, and bring that through our drainage system to be attenuated. We really have to hit our peak rates. Any, any surface that's improved like that, we want to run through our basin to make sure we hit the required rates in those, those design storms. Is that?
Yeah, and then.
The waiver from the required paved surface was the fourth one?
Is that the six, going down to 16 feet from 20 feet?
Just the surface itself is, instead of having it paved, we're requesting the gravel surface, so we're not, we're not proposing to pave it.
Right, are you going to go rebuild the gravels?
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to, yeah, there's two things going to happen. Both, and one, see that we have the proper amount of gravel here, and it's also got to be, I'd say.
Raise it up a little bit.
Geometry and some raising and some, the geometry a little more smoother going down the hill.
And the paved section up front, you're not touching at all?
We're not, we're planning to touch it at all, I mean, I know there's going to be a thing, I want to do a boring test in the pavement to see, make sure that it's adequate to meet the standards for the quality of gravel. We're pretty confident it does, but we don't, it's like, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm all in favor for gravel roads and rural residential lanes, and obviously in your, you've got a property here with your family, and you're dividing it, and keeping it all in the family, I guess, maybe?
This is fourth generation.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, fourth generation, I believe.
Yeah, but I, I do have, so I, so I took a little ride down there, I hope nobody, well, I didn't see anybody pulling any shotguns out. And, but it looks like you've done, so a question I have, it looks like you've done some clearing down on, on lot eight, and, well, actually, you've sort of laid out some, you've done some work on six, seven, and eight. And the eight is the, part of that is, and seven is in the buffer zone. So did you get a notice of intent from the, or get it cleared with conservation?
We had a qualified person flag this wetland, which is, it goes out into the field, you can see, if you walked out there, you can see that there's a tango and cactus and stuff. You can see, if you walked out there, you can see that there's a tango and cedars and stuff over it here. And then this is wooded right across here. As far as I know, no, we don't have any conservation permits at this time. We're waiting to see, you know, because if we have to extend this, another, I guess they want another eighteen feet extended for this turnaround, which we put it to the buffer zone. And any other grading or anything, if we were to do with detention pond, which definitely, we are maintaining the dash line, but the twenty-five foot no activity zone that the conservation commission requires.
Yeah, but it looked like you'd done a lot of clearing and filling to sort of create some areas with it.
I believe they brought us some material on this lot just to do some starting, start some grading to get available. But most of it, this is the way it's been. I don't have the aerial photo of it. It's been basically cleared metal for quite a few years.
You've done a lot of cleaning up. There's a lot of rocks around.
Yeah, I mean, this is, yeah, there's a lot of rocks. There's plenty of rocks here. It's a typical wetland. But this has all been cleared for years.
Well, there's a road bed now for lot-
Right.
Six, I guess, the first lot. That's gone in.
So, Michael, can you go back to the satellite? So all that white area that is on lot eight?
That's on lot eight, correct. This is, you'll see it, you know, five, or six, seven, eight.
And why is it so white?
I think it's just gravel. And it just shows up very bright. I'm not sure.
Did you put shelves down there?
I, I put shelves down there a long time. Yeah, that's where I used to keep my lobster traps.
I'm not sure when the aerial photo of this is from.
Probably six or seven years old.
Six or seven, yeah.
That's just when I sold my business.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Before that, that was lobster traps.
Mark, are you?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess going forward, obviously, any other work that you do in that buffer zone, you've got to go to conservation.
That's, that's, that's the next step from here. If we have to do, if we're just changing the hammerhead here, obviously we have to show that device for your sake, but also that when we can go to competition with all the activities we're proposing in the buffer zone.
Yeah. And other than that, I mean, as I said before, I guess I don't object to the sixteen feet as long as, I was, you know, concerned about the fire department's comment that they prefer twenty feet. But if, if the road bed can be made suitable for the fire trucks and to get down and it's cleared and there are no trees and so forth, then I, again, as we've just said up here, should be okay.
Sean, I think, you know, the real question is, the only question I have is, is really what is, how deep does the fire department want that pocket so they can back a truck around?
I think they mentioned fifty feet. It's like forty.
You mentioned fifty.
Fifty. And I think they mentioned a hundred and twenty in their comments, which I didn't understand. A hundred and twenty, that seems, I don't know why that-
I think they, they mistook the circle.
Yeah, I think, but, so, so this, I'll call it travel wave section, is forty-two feet. They would like to be fifty, which would require pushing the layout of the hammerhead out and obviously the wave out. Now, this is more than long enough. I think this is, I think if you have it, this is a little-
Maybe we could put a template on that and see if it fits there.
I believe they want a fifty-foot radius here, also on the layout. And right now it's twenty-five. That's typical what we do with Phillips, but we can put a fifty-foot radius. We extend this out eight feet to get to fifty feet, and then it's not a big deal. It does push it into the buffer zone, but-
I can see what vehicle they have. I can see what the dimensions are and show that on the plan to show that they'll have enough room to get down there and do that three-point journey. Certainly don't want, we want to give them whatever they need.
I mean, it's more than likely there's a fire in either residence that we go up in the driveway again with anyone.
And it all gravel at the end of the road. So the pond back there too, so.
This is actually all gravel, this dash line you see here. It's all gravelled here. Like the white area, they could turn around that very easily, but obviously it's not part of the layout.
What is that, I'm sorry to ask, what is that dotted line running east-west at the end of the cul-de-sac? What is that?
This one?
Yeah.
That's, that's the drainage easement.
That's the drainage easement for the pond that's over here. This, this swell comes down.
Sorry.
In vertigo. So, so is the drainage pond, is the easement line around the pond?
Oh, okay, okay, I see.
Which includes this swell here?
Yeah.
The berm, the berms carrying it around the pond.
Can label that.
I don't know if they noticed, but we did include easements around the driveway culverts with the swells, so that's-
Put that one, I remember. I can put them on both as well. That's, that's what I had anticipated. That's how I read Cole's comment, because they wanted easements on both of those culverts, which is fine.
And just for the record, can you explain the two waivers for the water quality and the volume control?
Yep. The water quality, the state requires for subdivisions over four lots, it's eighty percent TSS removal. In this case, we had, we had gravel. The only, Westwood, I think, treats gravel as impervious. So we, we wouldn't technically meet the eighty percent with what we have for a basin. We would get some treatment out of the grass swells and in the, in the, and then the extended detention basin as is, but it wouldn't meet the eighty percent. And the way I had approached that is typically in, for lots of, in a case like this, again, two small lots, the only real impervious by the book is the roof and the driveways. The gravel, although it does, the town does call it as a higher runoff number, you still do get some water that gets into the ground there. And it's not, it's not, the runoff off of gravel is not what you'd get from at least the driveway. The roof's technically clean. So in this case, the only, the only impervious I would, I would see functionally is the driveway. And it's such a small area that I think we're going to get a lot of treatment. But by the book, by the way, the state specifies the TSS removal rates. We'd need either a water quality unit, unit basically, or to do a wet basin there. And a water quality unit is a maintenance item. It's, to install something like that at the end and to have it on a gravel light would be a nightmare, in my opinion. It would be, they'd be in there cleaning that all the time.
You shouldn't do that.
Yeah, it would be a disaster. So the other alternative would be a wet basin. But I think that would, I mean, my rationale was that that would kind of hamper their ability to maintain that basin in the future, to be able to mow, to, to drive down there to, to really get a good look at it if something's gone wrong with it, if the, if there's anything going wrong with the berm or the slope. And I, those are, I guess those measurements, you always wonder how they got on eighty percent TSS removal based upon swells and these other things. I mean, we will get treatment out of this basin, but I, I can't say we get eighty percent, hence our request for the waiver.
Okay, and the volume?
Yeah, the volume, the, the town has a provision where, I believe it's in the ten-year storm, it's, it's requested to remove, reduce the volume so as to prevent any flooding downstream. I, I believe there's also a stipulation in there that says that that, that more or less applies to areas where you're not discharging to a large wetland or a large, something that basically can handle that amount of water and dissipate that water. So it's not going directly onto a downstream and impacting on a butter, say, which is something we, we always look at. The other thing with, with that is we're in C and D soils. So the only, I mean, there's two ways that you can reduce volume. You can put the water back up in here, which we can't do that, and then you have to infiltrate it. C and D soil is very difficult to infiltrate, especially the D soils. And my opinion, again, we will get infiltration out here most of, most times of the year. Winter, high groundwater, we won't get infiltration and nor would we have attempt to take credit for that. So that was why we had requested the volume reduction. We don't believe we'll have any impact on anyone downstream. And we didn't want to raise up that infrastructure so high and then claim infiltration when we don't know that we'd be getting it through a C and D soil in the first place. It's not something I like to see in a report if we're not sure we can get it.
So the, the, the metrics for what you're doing here, are you going to reduce the volume at all?
Yeah. The volume you reduce, the requirement's a twenty percent reduction. That's what you require. And it varies between, you know, ten to twenty percent on all the storms, depending on which storm you want to call. But it's one of those things where you're going to be chasing your tail. Because the only way to do that is to create more pond, more disturbance on existing soil. And it is kind of counterproductive when you're flowing into a very large wetland that goes down quite a ways down the point of the road, so.
So in most storms, you're reducing the volume some?
Well, I think we're going to get, we would get some infiltration and that would reduce the volume. But to take credit for that in the report, I mean, we, we could revise that, but I-
We got, we got about a four percent reduction in the ten-year storm.
Well, these are, these are rates though. Rates and volumes, different animal. I mean, we do, we, we're substantially lower in the rates. The volume is a lot closer. And I, I think we'll get, again, we'll get some infiltration in the basin and the ground, which will reduce the volume. But that's not quantified in this report. But functionally, I think that's what we'll see. Is a reduction in, in volume, but not, I don't believe, to the extent that unless we, we design an infiltration basin, raise it up, make sure we have the right separation to groundwater, would we get what the town specifically requires there? It's, it's a, it's a much bigger effort construction-wise. And to look at, again, I try to bring it back when I was designing it to see the big picture as to where the discharge is going. And I, I, could you go back to the aerial, please, over there? I don't know if it's, if I can see this, but there's a, this large wetland and then that, as Sean mentioned, is an intermittent stream. There's no one down here before it crosses under and goes to the river. We would not have an impact on the water even either, you know, approximately or remotely. That's, that's what I was looking at.
How does it get down to the river? It goes through a culvert or something and?
Yeah. Do you know where Pierce's Brook is? Crosses Peter Rusty's property, just to the south of Rusty's property?
Oh, okay.
And that's several thousand feet away from this pond.
So the old Figuritos is north of that?
Uh, Figuritos.
The landway comes out on Figuritos.
Yeah, right there, right next to Fig, this is Figuritos. This is well above that. The crossing, the old Pierce's homestead, which really old is home, that's where Pierce's Brook under the road. Several years ago, it took out the road in that particular place. But that's several thousand feet from, I should say that fifteen hundred feet from where the detention pond is. To this, you can't see this giant wetland is here, but that's where it comes from.
It's big. It's a big one.
Yeah, thanks.
I, I think the, just looking at the grading here, you're cutting twelve, fourteen inches out of the, out of the pasture land. And you see how the wetland sticks up in the thumb next to you?
It cuts them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you look at your basin, you're cutting twelve to fourteen inches and you've got a test bit of twenty inches to the water table. So I think if you leave the basin alone with the seed source of all that wetland next to you, you would grow a wet community in there.
It probably will take up that way naturally.
Yeah, I think once you get within-
Where does it flip?
Once, once you get within six inches of water table, you're going to grow a wet so.
Anybody else? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this? Recommendation from the planners?
I recommend that you would approve the definitive subdivision with the waivers requested and the items we discussed with providing the spillway cross-section detail, maintaining trees for the fire department access. The road bed is to be made suitable for the fire trucks and extend the hammerhead to fifty feet and increase the radius.
So what is the thought of the board? Should we ask for these changes before we approve it? Or should we approve it contingent of the board's changing?
Well, I, I think we should close the public hearing. And then, you know, I would be willing to make a motion subject to the changes discussed here.
Okay. So we need a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the definitive subdivision public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I would move to approve the definitive subdivision plan entitled Inheritance Lane as defined under chapter eighty-one L of the subdivision control law with the additions we've discussed today, which, which are primarily the revisions to the turnaround and turnaround, the hammerhead turnaround and the hammerhead, the geometry of the roadway to make the turning radiuses that the, that the fire department is looking for. And also, Mr. Chairman, I would, as part of our approval, I would move to approve the waivers. What was your question?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next will be the planners' reports.
My report was based on all of the ANRs and public hearings we had tonight, so Michael can review his report.
So I just have one update, and that's an update on grants. I worked with Roger Fernandez of Route Six Sewer Project Manager to submit a million, something fifty thousand dollar request for funds to construct the first segment of the Route Six sewer. Also related to that, we have, we have an outstanding federal appropriations request for the project. And that decision for that should be released on July thirty-first. Let's hope for some videos from the end of July. Let's hope for some videos from the end of July. I also submitted a combined sixty-four thousand dollars request through the rural and small town fund and kind of wealth places grant to do, to plan for streetscape improvements on Main Road and Central Village. We are working with the, with SERPA, the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, to apply to the coastal resilience grant program, potentially, depending on what we work out. What we're thinking right now is that the grant funds would be used to study Westport's marshes for their migration potential. And that would be a project that would be building off of some of the work that Buzzards Bay option has already completed with studying Westport's marshes for migration. And then developing a prioritization plan and designing a pilot project to help facilitate marsh migration. In one of those high priority areas. Then next I have the Buzzards Bay National Estuaries Program. I talked to someone from Buzzards Bay earlier today, asking about the second round of funding for this. We've previously applied for funds for operation and maintenance of the municipal storm sewer and also to do, to design a community septic system at the let. And so funds, I think, will get, hopefully, will get released, or the requests for proposals will hopefully get released this week or next week. So we'll reapply for both those projects. And we have three other grants that are still outstanding. That's the MVP two point oh. The, we applied for a culvert replacement grant. And the hazard mitigation grant program. That's something that is, it's still outstanding. I applied for that in, I think, November. I've asked for updates periodically and they say that it's, decisions are coming and it keeps getting pushed. So I don't, I don't know what's going on with that.
Good, thank you. So the first one, that you're applying for one point something billion dollar grant for the water sewer?
Yeah, that was the Mass Works Green.
Mass Works Green.
Yeah, that was, the first two that I mentioned were the, through the One Stop Program, and that was all due June first. So those have all been submitted.
Okay. Fingers crossed. So... Correspondence. Want to go through?
Sure. So for correspondence, letter A is motion to dismiss for five thirty-three Horse Neck Road. It's, it's just the Richards family's council made a motion to dismiss their appeal. So we don't have to do anything about it. It's just for your, for your records and to keep you up to date. That was submitted on May fifteenth. That's the newest piece of info we have for that. Letter B is chapter ninety-one for thirteen eighty J Drift Road. Just a copy of the plans. For a dog. Um, letter C is chapter ninety-one Carrick for seventeen oh two C Drift Road. And... Letter D is a butter notification. There's currently one fifty Spinnaker Way and Airbnb being operated. And a cease and desist was issued to that. And there's a public hearing on June twenty-first with the zoning board of appeals. For a special permit by the zoning board is requiring a permit for bed and breakfast.
Wasn't aware that they needed a permit for Airbnb or Airbnb.
I don't think they do. I don't, we don't have anything in our bylaw for Airbnbs currently.
So if they're running a true Airbnb, I guess that's different.
Yeah, I don't think-
Do we need a special permit for that?
For bed and breakfast?
Yeah, probably not allowed in here.
I don't-
Unless in the business district.
Right.
Okay. Invoices, reimbursements. WB Mason, twenty-eight dollars and forty-four cents for a keyboard and mouse. Serpide Annual Meeting Travel reimbursement for Nadine Castro, thirty-nine, thirty-nine. Serpide Annual Meeting Travel reimbursement for Amy Messier, thirty-nine, thirty-nine. And Serpide Annual Meeting Travel reimbursement, Michael Burz, thirty-nine, thirty-nine. Like a motion to approve those invoices?
Sure move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of May sixteenth?
Well, unless somebody else sees something in here, I did not see any corrections. And so I would, I would move to approve them.
I didn't attend, I read them, but I did, I was absent, but I would, I would second.
So anybody have any comments, edits? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And... Short and long-term planning discussions? Mark and I and Michael and Amy have been meeting with Russ about the rezoning of Route Six. And I think after the next meeting with Russ, when is that?
We haven't scheduled it up yet. I just talked to him this morning and we're going to be scheduling out probably next week or the following. We should have the materials brought out the end of the week.
Okay. And after that, I think we ought to open it up to public meetings so we get some more input.
Mm-hmm.
To get some, we've got to travel down this road pretty quickly because even though it's only June, it isn't long before we have to submit them.
I talked, I talked to Russ this morning, this morning or maybe it was yesterday. And I wanted to touch base with him about the public engagement piece because I didn't want to get so far down the line where we have this fully fleshed out rezoning framework and it hasn't been vetted at all by public. And so he said that our next advisory meeting with the, just you, me, Amy, Mark, Goodenroger, will be dedicated to talking about those public engagement process, or those materials in the public engagement process that he'll propose to us. And then subsequent meetings will be the public engagement. So it's going, I would, I would say probably at this point, I don't know how far along they have, the, all of the other additional materials that they would like, you know, like handouts and stuff like that. I don't know if they have all those developed, but hopefully, maybe like the end of July, I don't know. When we meet with Russ, he'll be able to give us a better indication of when that, that process will begin.
Okay. Matters not reasonably anticipated?
Mr. Chairman, I guess it's really in the long-term planning.
Okay.
But now that we don't have a full, communiting living proposal in front of us, I think it's even more, Mark, in the long-term planning, thinking about, because I believe we have a town meeting article on the reuse of the old high school. And they're beginning that study. One should really think about partnering and could the, could the old high school, in addition to serving other administrative uses, could a portion of that be really used for senior housing, veterans housing, that type of stuff? Converting those, I mean, there's lots of examples around where, where the school classrooms have been converted into the E units. And whether or not the library and the cafeteria and the kitchen can conserve that cognitive function for a piece of, a piece of that. It looks like the components were real, something that would really comply with our zoning are there. And there may be leftover pieces, there's the issues of what you do with the playing fields, there, you know, this. But, but I, hopefully, we would think carefully about, with a clear need, would the old high school play that, play that role? And I think the possibility of partnering in which the town puts up the property as the asset and you come with a, you look for, you know, people like the folks that built Naperville Village, build, do conversions as well and partnering with them. Instead of, instead of the town offering the greenfield site in which the developer comes in, the town offers a building and, you know, parking lots and all of this. You know, you could create a condominium structure in that that could work. It's just that, you know, in terms of our long-term planning, you know, I think, I think that probably has a lot more potential than hanging up the sales sign.
Yeah, no, I agree, Bob. I mean, it's, it is an enormous structure and it, but it has the attributes of a cafeteria and an auditorium and gymnasium. There are many components that could be saved and then the, and, and the needs in the town, as you just mentioned, in various quarters, housing being one of the major ones. I've always felt that, and this is where they're hoping to drive the study toward a look at how that building can accommodate a mix of uses that benefit the town. Whether, I mean, combining housing, particularly elderly housing, with inside a facility that has, that has the council of aging, that has the Westport Cultural Council, what do they call themselves? Council, yeah. And they can have, give art classes there because there's art studios in the building. And they'd love to have the auditorium to put on plays and so forth. So there, a lot, a lot of those components of the building that would benefit different groups within the town and fill some of the needs. The biggest issue will be this whole question of whether, what to do with administrative offices. And that will certainly be one of the very important topics to whether there's, there's those people who feel that we should move, as you heard, move the offices from the town hall and from this annex into that building. But that occupies only a very small portion of the building, for one thing. It's, it's like fifteen thousand square feet of, out of a hundred and fifty thousand square, a hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet. So there's plenty of room for-
We still have school administration in that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another issue.
Well, yeah, but-
No one seems to want to talk about that, when we put that-
Well, the problem I see with moving the town hall and the functions that are in this building out of Central Village is you deplete Central Village.
Right.
And number two, people say, well, you can sell them. For what?
This is, this is, if you try to sell this, this is a tear down. And then if you tear it down, then what is it?
It costs you more to tear it down than it would be to buy a piece of land.
I would hope that we have something that they would be able to tear this building down historically.
Well-
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think it prevents demolition entirely. But, no, I mean, that's, there's a strong feeling within some quarters of the town that they want to move these offices. And then I think there's a lot of equally strong feelings that that would be a mistake. So that's, that's why I say this is a hurdle that this committee has got to get a resolution. But I think if they put forward a good plan of alternative uses that benefit the town, that could, that could dissuade those who feel we should move town offices as well.
We need, all the activity that we can direct into the Central Village, we need to direct it there.
Yeah, right, right. And the argument that the town, that the high school is centrally located is true geographically, but it's not really demographically centrally located. So this is, as you just said, this is the so-called Central Village and-
My feeling when I'm, when I'm hearing this, is, I mean, it's an asset. I agree with you, with many uses that the town needs to maintain control of. Not put a sign on it, knock it down, sell it or whatever, no. It's an asset that we will never be able to afford to buy another piece of property like that.
Right. And, but if you tried to sell it and before you sold it, you had to knock down the high school, that would cost more than you could get for the land.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it would be-
If you do that, then it's, what is it zoned for? Single-family residential.
Right.
Yeah, it was appraised for eleven million dollars, but I don't believe that for a minute. I don't think you'd, you'd get anything really.
But I think it could be an eleven million dollar asset for the town.
But, yeah, I, I mean, the problem is, what would it cost you to have a, purchase a piece of property like that and build that?
Right.
Structure that's there now that's usable?
Well, how much did it cost to build the school, just to figure that? It'd be about sixty or seventy million dollars.
So I think what we have left there can be worked in many, and we're coming up with many uses. I mean, I can't see if, for, we have a severe need for senior and veterans. I mean, a component of that, I mean, I think you'd get a lot of people in favor of that.
But I think you also, the whole area has a dearth of compatriot housing. And I think, you know, my parents went, went to it as an independent living facility.
Yep.
And, believe me, what we have now and what they were proposing is not that. It's like Laurel Leaf in Providence. And that's what you need around here somewhere.
And I, and I agree, you know, when you're talking about partnering with people, it's, our building is a condominium where you keep control of it or it's become rental properties. But, but it's, it's the town that keeps control without selling the whole thing to the developer. There's just a partnering in which they do the development, but it's the town that's the owner.
Yeah, there were, in the late sixties, early seventies, there were a number of towns that had, in essence, surplus school buildings because the baby boom generation, of which I am one- I'm one, got out, you know, graduated through high school, so they, they, it left, and there wasn't a, a generation of kids that was as big coming through to fill those buildings, so there were towns, like Weston, for instance, took one of their middle schools, I think it was, and converted it very successfully into elderly housing. There have been many examples of that.
Rain Tree did the same thing with what had been a junior high school, which had been originally their high school, and they, they converted that. And the gym that's on that property, the town kept, and the residents use it, but also the youth, youth programs use it for basketball and stuff like that.
It's an asset we shouldn't get rid of, but we should figure out how to use it. Well, as, as Bob stated, we, at the town meeting, they approved two, up to two hundred thousand dollars to retain a consultant who would work with the committee to, to create a solution to that, or present it anyway to the town, some very viable options.
Mark, can you know if, if the, if the town owns engineered drawing plans of what's there?
Do they have them?
Yeah.
There have been, yeah, there are, I don't know that we have the original construction plans, I don't know.
Probably not.
But they did investigations, they did structural investigations and so forth, so there's...
Because SERPA, SERPA has a service that they can do, is on a weekend or sometime when there's nobody in the building, they have this equipment that they put in each room, and it measures everything. The ceiling height, the dimensions, the windows, the doors, everything. And it's really inexpensive. If that would help, they can do that.
Yeah, so, well, why don't I find out whether there are such plans first, but if not, which wouldn't surprise me, and that'd be a very good suggestion. When I used to do this stuff in my office, we'd be, I'd send some guy into a building to do existing conditions, and we had one of my first employees, he, you know, it used to take us hours to do this, because we'd go around, measure every corner, every window, door opening heights and everything. He'd come back in like an hour. I said, how'd you do this? And he had a plan, and he said, well, I just looked around, there were five windows over here, there was a door over here, and I put them on the plan. He didn't measure them. Jesus, I said, that's not going to work.
But they've done this on, on schools that need to be repurposed, so it's, I think...
And I, and I think the septic system, I'm hearing something, there's another one that's kind of like the elderly housing on Route Six, when they went, ripped, got ripped out, they don't have, so there's, there's half of that Legion field hasn't been used, so we got some value out there.
Well, it's, really, because what I've heard is that the athletic fields smell from septic, and the septic is actually on a neighbor's property.
They had some, it goes up, you go up a lane way to the back, but they had, they had some, I guess, some issues that were taken care of, but there's, there's half the Legion field's not, hasn't been used. It's probably supposed to be something dozing with it, but like today, changes automatically, but somebody had to flip a valve.
Any more items for matters not reasonably anticipated or short or long term? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.